Welcome to the Larkspur City Council meeting. We have a special meeting starting at 6:15. It is March the 21st, 2018. And may we have a report from staff?
Yes, Mayor. The city...
Oops, microphone.
The city was very fortunate that the voters entrusted us with the passage of Measure B to use sales tax with our primary purpose being to fund our five-year road rehabilitation program. The city needs to contract with a municipal advisor to initiate the process to develop the financing for that. The city has longstanding relationship with Wolf Hansen and particularly Mark Pressman from that firm. And I would recommend to the council that we continue that relationship and retain Mark as our municipal advisor through this process. And the proposal that you have in your packet came to us late. That's why we called this special meeting. It exceeds my spending authority. It's proposals for $79,000. That's all-inclusive for the life of the offering. So when we do these deals with the firm, that's a one-time fee, but then they advise us throughout the process at no additional cost. And in addition, that cost comes out of the proceeds of whatever financing we do. So they only get paid if we actually do a financing.
Right, okay.
But I need your authorization and hope you'll grant it to me this evening so that we can enter into the agreement and proceed to bring you a proposal for how to finance the road program.
Dan, that's a five-year term then, the $79,000?
Actually, the way it's worked in all our previous relationships, as long as those financings are active in any way, the firm has always supported us at no additional cost beyond what they've paid. So in fact, they are helping us research a 1980 sewer bond issuance. Just, we had an inquiry from a person who had purchased some of these bond coupons, and they're helping us with that.
Okay. Do we have any other questions? No? Should I bring it? I'll bring it to the public. Anybody from the public like to make a comment? Judy? I see none. So Dan, how do we proceed from here?
Need a vote to authorize me to enter into the agreement.
Okay, we have a vote?
We had a resolution about it, though, didn't we? No?
I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, I think it came...
Jamie, can you give a vote?
Did it come late? It came late, but I think I didn't print it out.
It should be in the resolution.
It's not in the paper.
There's no resolution, it's just a vote to authorize.
Okay.
So may I have a vote authorized?
I move... Oh, Larry. Good.
Go ahead, you started.
No, you started.
I was going to move to give the city manager authority to spend $79,000 engaging Wolf Hansen for Measure B financing.
Great, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. It's passed.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And for now, I guess we'll close?
Yeah, to take a break.
Take a break until 6:30. Thank you. Hey, Ross. Larkspur City Council meeting. We had an earlier special meeting at 6:15, and now we're back at 6:30. So if we're able to, those who are able to, please stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Jamie, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Haroff?
Here.
Councilmember Way?
Here.
Councilmember Chu?
Here.
Vice Mayor Morrison?
Here.
And Dan Hillmer is excused.
Great, thank you, Jamie. Public comment. Anybody from the public would like to make a comment? Great. I just want to say, please say your name and your address, and just so it's not on the agenda, and we, the council, are not able to comment on what you have to say. Welcome, thank you.
I appreciate that, thank you. My name's Ross Hasselstein, I'm from San Onofre. I was a member of the Flood Committee in San Onofre for three years, stepped off of that, and became part of the Memorial Park effort and supported the effort at Lefty Gomez to save that school, school grounds. I consider myself fairly well-informed. In advance of this discussion, I want to thank Dan Hillmer in his absence. I think he's one of the best representatives on Flood Zone 9. He represents this town very well, and with one of the most thoughtful forms of input. I also recognize that this council passed a resolution, I think it was in 2014, I've been passing that around to other councils to say, this is really what should be on everyone's mind, and that's equity and cost-benefit analysis. That was a bigger part of the discussions at Flood Zone 9 last night. I speak tonight as part of a process speaking at all councils in the Ross Valley, at the Board of Supervisors, and Sacramento. While you're here tonight, will be distilled and refined into a formal letter in local state authorities and representatives. The flood, the concept of flood control in the Ross Valley is headed for all but total failure. And now is the time to quickly consider a rational, more effective direction. U.S. Army Corps of Engineers describes three possible actions in any flood plain. One, large civil engineering projects to attempt to control flooding. Two, altering buildings by removing them, raising them, or protecting them. And three, finally doing nothing. If you add to that story, you could put FEMA on a sidebar, which supplements nothing with insurance. I note that what we've done here, I don't bring that up to say that our Army Corps of Engineers is trite, it's just simply three possible things you can do. The county has all but pursued only the first option, and that's large engineering projects which are a failure nationally in many, in the attempts to control floods, and now has turned towards the obvious, which is doing things with buildings and insurance. I've been asking for a year and a half for the county to update their yearly summary. We have not had one since 2015. I had to take, and that is how much has been spent to date. They've been putting me off every four months, every four months, every four months, saying it's coming, coming, coming. And we haven't had one for effectively, this year it'll be three years, this summer. I total, I went through all 10 years of financial reports, and I get the following, and maybe they'll confirm it. We've spent a total of $34 million. Twenty-eight and a half million was spent as of last July, and we'll be at 34 in this July. We only have about $57 million in flood fees, counting the next 10 years of fees in total. This means we only have $23 million left over the next 10 years. We earmarked a million for potentially adding to FEMA grants, another million for bridges and things like that, but effectively we have $2 million a year to spend for the next 10 years. Staff costs with the county are running $1.6 million. In short, there's not even enough money to meet a 10-year level protection. And I think that, and the reason I stand up now at kind of halftime in a 20-year bond issue, is that we all need to be accountable and stand up and really communicate to the citizens and amongst Flood Zone 9, Katie Rice, et cetera, said, where are we going? Why do we go here? What are we going to do with the $20 million? Because we're going to run out of money. There are other, there's numerous better ideas out there on how to spend the remaining $20 million, but essentially, we have the county's staff and Flood Zone 9 board headed towards almost all major civil engineering projects, which is exceptionally important. I'll end with that, my written statement is slightly longer than this, but you will see more people coming to meetings to get the word out. My comment last night to the remaining, the other members of Flood Zone 9 board was that they should follow the lead of Larkspur, and that Dan's representation of them, this council's representation of the citizens of Larkspur should set a precedent for everyone else in the valley. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for the nice comment. Appreciate it. Anybody else in the light, from the public, like to make a comment? I see none? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council. Now we have presentations and proclamations. 3.1, we have bike share programs in Marin presented by students, hello, students, from Sir Francis Drake High School. So please say your names, and where you're from, and we look forward to hearing what you have to say. Thanks for coming.
Hi, I'm Marcella Duzzi, I'm from San Onofre. And we're here to encourage the town to support and expedite a plan for a bike share system.
My name is Isla Moncrief, I'm a senior...
You need to get to the mic.
Oh, okay.
It's important for you to hear what you have to say and your name.
My name is Isla Moncrief, I'm a senior at Sir Francis Drake High School, and...
And I'm Bridget Bergman, I'm a junior at Drake.
All right. So, shall we just click this?
Okay, so, yeah, I said it. One of the major problems with not having like a bike system is that we have a lot of traffic congestion, which leads to concentrated air pollution, which is really bad for like health, and greenhouse gas emissions, which leads to climate change. So what we want to do is reduce automobile dependency and support a healthy, accessible, and affordable transportation option.
Add one more, please.
Okay. So just statistics about Smart Train, because this is a really important new transportation development that is going to be built in Larkspur as well, finished up in 2019 at the Larkspur Ferry Building. Since its launch, it's carried more than 310,000 passengers, so more just roughly carrying about 11,644 bikes, and that's actually from an older statistic, so it's higher now. And just about morning commute, most people travel between 7:00, 8:00 a.m. and in the afternoon, there's a 43% ridership from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. So that's just to say that a lot of people are commuting for work back and forth, and it's just a very heavy traffic. These are, this is just, I took this from the Golden Gate Bridge Highway and Transportation District for the ferry site. It's just showing ferry ridership monthly, and also an annual total, and as we can see, that almost reaches up, it's up to 2.5 million, and already we're up to 1.7 million people with four more months left to go. And that's just to show, there's a lot of people who utilize this transportation system, and yet there's still this disconnect between the last mile ridership and Smart Train. So, this is just something about bicycle sustainability.
So bicycles are the most energy-efficient form of transportation because they are run off the energy of the food that we consume, and that is a renewable resource. Also, bicycles do not produce greenhouse emissions when they are, and they are recyclable when they are properly manufactured. So we would like our bike shares to be in areas that are effective in urban areas, such as like San Rafael and Larkspur. We all know there's a lot of business in those towns. They are really good to have in communities like this because, as I said, it's very populated, and also they are available 24/7, so you can always access them at any time throughout the day. And they get you basically anywhere, you can stop at one or any place, and like pick one up, go somewhere else, drop it off. And you don't really have, like, it's not really your responsibility, it's operators' responsibilities, and someone's always keeping control over the bikes.
So as some may know, the Transportation Authority of Marin received a grant for $826,000 in November of 2017 towards creating a comprehensive bike share program. But not much has happened since then, it's still very early on in the progress of it, so we really, that makes, stresses it even more that we need to take action and support, and we need support from the entire county and public to initiate this vision. Cross-communication with other towns such as San Rafael, who are included in this plan, are essential as well. In fact, we even talked to them about this grant, this idea, and this plan. And the Larkspur community itself has to be involved to know where these stations should be and how they want this plan to be executed, so as we are fostering sustainability and social justice. One component of this is vendors. Companies like OFO, Motivate, Jump, and Lime Bike are already being used around the Bay Area and in different locations, and are just a few possibilities from many that have proven successful in urban areas. And that also must be evaluated for efficiency in this region. I have also highlighted the different approaches towards bike share implementation at the ferry terminal, a transportation hotspot. Could we click to the next slide? This is the vendors, one more. Thank you. So this is just talking about the things we need to consider, technology, GPS systems, there's a lot of new innovation with bike share technology, things are always being up to date, there's docking systems, but there's also a dockless system, which the GPS comes in handy with. That was also about creating a lot of economic opportunity with new jobs for monitoring bicycles and making sure they're evenly dispersed throughout different locations. And, next slide? So the couple I highlighted were, this is just an image off of a Google satellite map, but it's, it's just a couple station ideas showing that we can utilize existing bike racks, that kind of comes with the dockless idea, using or optimizing empty space or available space, and also utilizing the Smart Train platform, once it's completed. That's an image of it in progress, but there will probably be a lot of space around there. And this is at the ferry terminal again. All right, so, and we just would say, why are we doing this now? Also, illustrations and information are available to you. We're doing this because Marin is a leader in environmental protection, and we want to continue to prove that with sustainable and affordable transportation that will foster a resilient community. Thank you.
Questions for you, so stay here, you never know. All right, any of my council members have questions for the Drake students?
Okay.
Okay. Larry, you want to ask? Ask away?
Yeah, I guess, I wasn't clear on what the ask is.
The ask is that we would like to know what kind of support, and hopefully see more action from the communities where, like, Larkspur that has the ferry terminal, that's going to be, that's in the plan for the Transportation Authority of Marin to connect this bike share system along the entire 101 route to this last mile location. And we just wanted to know if there's any plans right now, and how, and just urge the council, the town, to really start looking into what they want to do. I talk with the Transportation Authority of Marin, and they're saying, it's still really early on, but soon they're really going to need a lot of public opinion, and just making sure to hold different meetings to see what the public wants, and to hear where these locations are viable, and if there are already locations the town is looking at.
Yeah, I think one of the interesting things, after I saw your presentation on the agenda, is I started to look at what they do in San Francisco. And I don't know how all the different system works, but the one system, I think it's Jump, it's the red bikes with the batteries on it?
Electrical bikes.
Yeah, the electric ones. I think what's interesting about that one is that it creates the concentration of the locations, because since it's all GPS-driven, you know where the highest demand is, and you know where the highest destination points are. So it almost becomes, it creates its own, you know, locations, in effect, just in terms of where people put it. So I would think that type of flexibility would, you know, service at least the users, you know, in the best way, that we're not looking at a fixed location where people, you may find out that it's just, doesn't have the demand or something.
Okay.
But, yeah, I mean, we talked about it when Smart and TAM were here, we do need to find a way to get people to and from their destinations once they get off the train.
Wonderful, that's great to know.
We had a presentation last council meeting from Diane Steinhauser, who's the executive director of TAM, and it was, it was an issue that was brought up. I think we're really behind the curve on bike shares, and I think we need to do a lot more of it. So, I mean, I'm in the city all the time, and there's bike shares, docking locations for those Ford bikes about every six blocks, it seems like. So I'm not really sure what your ask was, but if there's some letter of support we can do, or something like that, but it makes perfect sense to have a docking station near Smart, near the ferry terminal, in the Bon Air Shopping Center, and then we can have people get off and come into Larkspur and shop, and use our restaurants, and not drive on the roads, because they'll come from the city. And I think we need to be very expressive about that. So if we can support you in that in any way, I'm very much interested in bringing in resiliency like this.
Wonderful.
It'd be nice to have other cities have the stations, too. I think the electrical bikes is really something to look into. We are an aging population. Yeah. Nice job, ladies.
Thank you.
Anything else? Let me just see, anybody from the public like to ask any questions? All right, I see none. Thanks very much. Great presentation. Thanks for doing that. Thanks for caring. All right, we will move on to 3.2, Marin County Commission on Aging. We have a yearly update with Judith Chafron. And Judith, do you go by Judy or Judith?
Doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter?
No.
Well, thank you for being our representative.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you. I am pleased to be the Larkspur representative to the County Commission on Aging. It's made up of a large group of interested volunteers who give the subject a lot of thought, and effort, and time. Because of my years of experience in affordable housing, I have been given a place on the Committee of Housing and Transportation. Two vital topics for senior citizens. All of us who are fortunate to become seniors, all of us, even the little ones, someday, they will be, may face a time when we no longer can drive or bike, and need supplemental support. Whistlestop in San Rafael has developed a program that includes transit training, shared car rides, volunteer drivers, along with assisting travelers with disabilities. The villages group of senior citizens to which Larkspur belongs also offers transport to seniors, along with volunteer help to seniors in their homes. The housing issue is more complicated, since many of our seniors live in homes that have become difficult for them to navigate. There is assistance available, suggestions for modifying, remodeling the house, there is help out there, but it, there's not a whole lot of help in making those decisions. I guess people rely on their kids, and if their kids aren't around to tell them what to do, then they're stuck. You know, they just don't understand how to modify their lives so that they can stay in their homes. Renting a portion of the senior's home is becoming a new thing, and maybe that will help to, with the housing shortage, and also with having seniors who need help in their homes. I'd be pleased to answer any questions you might have, but I've only been on the committee for a couple months, so I don't know how many good answers I have so far. But if you have any questions, I...
Councilmembers, thank you, Judy, for the report. And councilmembers, any questions for Judy?
Judy, does the committee, or the commission put out an annual report about these issues?
Oh, they're putting out reports all the time.
Okay.
Yeah. And any interest that you have in anything specific, as soon as it comes out, I can forward one to you.
That would be wonderful.
Yeah, I think that, I'd like to hear what their...
I'm trying to collect stuff, that's what I'm doing right now. I have two baskets at home, full of stuff. That they are putting out timetables, and who to ask, and what to ask, but Ann and I were talking earlier about, let's, it would be so nice to find out who our seniors are, and where they are.
Like, what if they're a day?
That would be, you know, the Larkspur group.
Yeah, sure.
We can't be responsible for everybody all over the county, but the Larkspur group. And then that would help us to try to determine who needs what, who wants what, what we can do for them.
Judy and I are going to meet with Dr. Larry Meredith, and we're going to talk about age-friendly, and the whole process, and maybe doing that survey. And Judy and I also sit on the Twin City Village, which accommodates to the aging senior to keep, help them keep in their, stay in their homes as long as possible, so...
Right, right. Or just, and keep social, and keep moving, going out, doing stuff. That's, that's important, too.
Okay. Anybody, oh, Larry?
You had mentioned that there's some reports related to, you know, affordable housing, or at least you're trying to study that issue?
Yes.
Have they issued any recommendations as to what people can do? I mean, one of the ideas you had was about renting out the extra space, and we've heard about that on a short-term rental basis, and that creates its own problems, but if you have...
You mean the Airbnb sort of thing?
Yeah, but if you had a long-term rental, you know, one of the things that could help cities is that, you know, if they helped to address some of the issues that the city comes up against, you know, such as, you know, how do you deal with parking in areas?
Right, all of those, exactly. You have to have enough parking, but I think that, again, once we find out who our seniors are, and where they are, but, you know, there's such a thing as, and get the city, we obviously would involve the city and the regulations and so forth, in if they wanted to rent out a room and a bath to someone who needs housing, that could be affordable, it could be a help to them, who, you know, can you bring in the groceries? Sure, you know, that kind of thing.
Yeah, I don't think anybody is going to make something affordable unless it, there's another incentive. And in that, you know, because you're going to try and get whatever the prevailing rate is...
Unfortunately, that's the way it works.
Yeah, that's just plain economics, especially in a low-supply situation. But if the county were able to do something with, you know, say, a property tax exemption or something like that...
Well, Larkspur, for those of you in the audience who don't know, you know, but Larkspur just approved a 12-unit affordable housing complex on King Street. Fabulous. It's going to be great. Seniors, needy, supervised, regulated, sort of, I mean, I don't want to make it sound like, you know, right, it's terrible, but, because Homeward Bound is doing the, operating the program, and they're wonderful. I've worked with them for years. So that is terrific. I mean, 12, 12 affordable units, right out of the blue, is pretty super.
Yeah. Neil's here. If somebody were to restrict their rental at a certain price, would we get affordable housing credit in our housing element?
If it was restricted, if it was deed restricted, you certainly would.
No, it wouldn't be deed restricted.
No, it wouldn't be deed restricted.
No, this would be a rental.
Yeah, so, no, but I mean, you know, to have, saying that this, you promise to do that. I think that would be the only way that you could do it, because if you, if you didn't promise in some way or other, then you could always change your mind and get the top bread
Try to clarify, the city does allow for rental of rooms, which is essentially sharing the dwelling unit. So that's one way of creating housing, but it doesn't necessarily create housing units. So within, as part of a single-family dwelling or dwelling unit, you can certainly rent a room to up to three persons, the, or three rooms, but we do allow that for maximum of three persons. Then options from there that actually create potentially affordable housing are junior second units, and are junior accessory dwelling units, or accessory dwelling units. And accessory dwelling units are units up to 700 square feet that are, have a full kitchen and one or two bedrooms, a junior, excuse me, either a studio or one bedroom, and a junior second unit is kind of a smaller version of that with a kitchenette, and that doesn't require parking. So there are, we're actually looking at probably doing more incentives to try to encourage more of these types of dwelling units throughout the city. We're averaging still about one to two a year. But that is a way we would really encourage for the elderly who can live in place, senior citizens, to try to age in place by having, providing housing that is at least more affordable, whether it is... it is through room share or through junior or accessory dwelling units.
They would have to be converted in order to be credited towards our housing element numbers.
That's correct. And the Marin Housing Authority is actually looking at a program of providing low-interest loans for, or low or non-interest loans for property owners who are low-income, and those would be for deed restricted, actually deed restricted units. We don't require deed restriction necessarily, so we try to encourage these units and hope that they're more affordable by design. But we're looking at programs to try to encourage more of these that might actually be deed restricted as well. I'd also say the Marin Housing Authority is also looking at programs to try to provide lists or match up people who are looking for tenants with other people, students, people in the community who are in need of housing. So that's a program they're working on countywide.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Neil. Judy, thank you.
Sure.
Oh, oh, I think we have a question for you.
I have an announcement.
Oh, okay. Cindy, Cindy, does this have to do, does this have to do about Commission on Aging?
Yes, yes, yes.
So it's a question with Judy, right? You're gonna...
I would like to tell Judy something that may be of interest to you all.
All right.
I saw an, on the internet a couple of days ago, that Lyft is now offering subscription services. These will not be self-driving cars, not yet. There will be a driver. And for maybe 150 or 200 a month, you get a certain number of rides to go a certain number of miles. And if some seniors wanted to go someplace together, I don't think Lyft is going to limit the riders to one. Okay, good. So I find that quite exciting.
Yeah, it is exciting. Thank you, Cindy. Appreciate it. Judy, thanks. All right. Nice job. All right, we'll move on to 3.3. We have Marin-Sonoma-Mosquito and Vector Controlled District, a yearly update by Gail Bloom.
Okay, do you want me to introduce?
Come on up, sure. Hi, Gail.
Okay. We're about to introduce...
Well, Gail, I want to just thank you for being our representative. We appreciate your service.
Oh, well, thank you so much. I've been a year and a half on the, what I affectionately call the bug board.
The bug board.
And here you go.
Okay. And who are you, sir?
Well, good evening, Madam Vice Mayor, council members and staff. I'm Phil Smith. I'm the general manager of the district. Thanks for the invitation to be here tonight and give you a little overview of the district and its activities. And so we have a very short video. It's just about three minutes. And then I have a few slides that will give you some more particulars with particular reference to the Larkspur area. So if it pleases the council, we'll just go ahead and do the video.
...was formed over 100 years ago in San Rafael for the protection of the public. The district has since expanded to all of Marin and Sonoma counties, and we now provide a variety of services related to mosquitoes, ticks, yellow jackets, and rodents. Since we are funded by taxes and benefit assessments, anyone in either county can utilize our services free of additional charge.
The word vector refers to any creature capable of transmitting disease, producing discomfort, or causing injury to humans or animals. Each year, our team responds to more than 4,500 requests for services related to not only mosquitoes, but yellow jackets and rodents. We use a scientific approach to vector control commonly referred to as Integrated Vector Management, or IBM. IBM incorporates five basic methods that include public information and education, surveillance, biological control, source reduction, and microbial and chemical control. This strategy allows us to protect public health using the most environmentally compatible methods to control mosquitoes in a wide variety of habitats. Do you have an unwanted furry visitor? We provide rodent control advice and inspections to any home or business in our area. Our specialists can locate places where rats and mice can enter buildings and can recommend solutions to make your home or business less attractive to these destructive pests. Everyone knows that yellow jackets can be annoying at a barbecue, but encounters with these dangerous insects can sometimes be life-threatening. People are often stung by yellow jackets when they unknowingly get too close to a nest that is hidden underground. If you find the entrance to a yellow jacket nest, we can eradicate it for you so that you don't get stung. If you're looking for a pesticide-free alternative to managing mosquitoes in your water features, we can provide you with mosquito fish. These helpful fish thrive in ornamental ponds, water troughs, neglected pools, and other human-made water sources that are at least 18 inches deep. A single mosquito fish can eat up to 500 mosquito larvae in one day. Our lab staff works closely with our operations department to monitor and suppress mosquito populations through comprehensive surveillance. The lab also maintains colonies of mosquitoes that are used to evaluate the effectiveness of mosquito control materials and methods. We also collect ticks from various parks and publicly-owned land. These ticks are tested for the causative agent of Lyme disease. Each year, more than 5,000 local students experience our hand-on educational program, teaching them about the biology, ecology, and safety tips relating to mosquitoes, yellow jackets, and ticks. Teachers borrow mosquito lifecycle observation cages, and students get to watch the mosquito lifecycle up close without being bitten. Most importantly, students learn how they can help make their neighborhood safe from vectors, and they share what they learn with their families. The work we do at the Marin-Sonoma-Mosquito and Vector Controlled District plays a critical role in keeping families safe from vector-borne illnesses by utilizing cost-effective, environmentally responsible, integrated vector management practices. We encourage you to learn more about what we do, and if you have any additional questions, please don't hesitate to contact us.
So thanks. Maybe we could go to the slides. So the impetus for forming the district actually was viciously biting saltmarsh mosquitoes that carried diseases and made life really unbearable in the early 1900s. And it was women, actually, in the, thank you, San Rafael Improvement Club, who formed the cadre of people who actually made the district happen. And in, yeah, in this map here, it's a little hard to see the colors, but this is the existing district that was formed in about 1915. And it expanded northbound to include a lot of Sonoma County in the subsequent years. And then in 2004, when West Nile virus arrived in the area, the remaining territories of both counties, and that's kind of shown in this large gray area here, were annexed to the district, so that today we serve the entirety of Marin and Sonoma Counties, all the way from Golden Gate Bridge, across to Napa County, and then up to Mendocino County. We have a rather large governing body, 24 members, and typically, we hold the meetings on the second Wednesday of each month. And we're having quite a bit of turnover on the board right now, so we're grateful to have your excellent trustee. I think we covered most of the services provided in the video, but there's quite a suite of them. And the, the video also spoke about the Integrated Vector Management Program. So we take a tiered approach that focuses on outreach, education, source reduction, and so forth. The mosquitoes we often think of as a nuisance, but worldwide, they're responsible for about a million deaths a year. So it's actually the deadliest creature on the earth. One thing that we often get asked about is, well, what about the burgeoning organic industry of growers and business and so forth? And we actually maintain very close working relationships, good harmonious relationship with the organic growers and the Beekeeper Association. And to that end, in 2012, we decided that we needed to beef up our environmental documentation. So naively, we plunged into what we thought wouldn't be too difficult, a project. And four years and about 1,200 pages later, we ended up certifying an environmental impact report. And slightly unusually, this one doesn't focus on a site. It's not a site-specific type of project. It looks at the whole range of different environmental and human habitats, sensitive organisms found across the districts, and looks at our program. The mosquito control program, talked about in the video, we do find quite a few of these, what we refer to as green pools. We're working in the burned areas up in Sonoma County right now, and that's left about 800 swimming pools in this condition. So we're doing a lot of work there to, to reduce that. The mosquito fish can work very well in that type of environment. And last year, we did a flyover of the area looking for swimming pools that aren't maintained, so that gives us some pretty good information. Here's an unusual view of our nemesis, the mosquito, with, thanks to Bill Gates and his foundation for providing that rather scary photo. With Zika grabbing the headlines last year, it's kind of easy to forget that actually the biggest threat from encephalitis viruses, as we call them, is the Zika virus. It's endemic in the bird population in the area here. Fortunately, we have had very few cases in the last few years, and none, actually, in Marin the last couple of years. So we're really pleased about that. There's about 22 species of mosquito found in the area, and the populations vary by season and the particular locality. What's kind of interesting to us is that with the advent of climate change, we're seeing a crossover and overlap of species in different areas and different times. Some of the warmer species, mosquitoes are hanging on longer. Some of the species from the south are coming up north. So we are seeing effects from climate change. We have a live geospatial database that our technicians use in their service vehicles all the time. And this is just a little shot of the Larkspur area, showing that we have about 200 known sources of mosquitoes on the inventory. And we check these on a regular basis. The color coding shows the type of site and when we last checked it. And this is in addition to the on-call service request work that we do. And we also work in the marshes and wetlands, which are large generators of aggressive, aggressively biting mosquitoes, some of which will fly up to 20 miles to, to seek a blood meal. So we definitely like to keep on top of them. In Larkspur last year, these are the numbers that we had for the local service requests. And we're shaping up to have another busy year. The late rains look as though they're going to give us a potentially bumper mosquito challenge this year. We're already experiencing a pretty high demand for services. These are some of the areas that we check very regularly in your local area. We work closely with your public works department. The video mentioned a little bit the rodent program, and as you may have seen in the press recently, somewhat embarrassingly, the Civic Center cafeteria in San Rafael was closed due to a fairly major rodent infestation. So you never know where they're gonna kind of show up next. We're helping them take care of that. Yeah. In the video, you may have seen people waving white flags. That's, we're not surrendering. We use them actually to collect the ticks, and then we take them to the lab and analyze them. We publish that data. We provide the data to the parks, and they put up warning signs and so forth. These are a few areas on the left, Alonpali State Park, Roy's Redwoods, that we've tested recently. We're finding a fairly low infection rate with the Borrelia burgdorferi bacteria that causes Lyme disease at the moment. But in the next slide, this is aggregated data for a few years, and you can see that in Chinacamp, MMWD lands, Mount Tam, and so forth, the infection rate's about 2.5%. So most ticks that grab onto you, most adult ticks, will not have the Lyme disease. However, there's another, there are other species of viruses and bacteria that the ticks carry, and we're starting to look at those. There's another one called burgdorferi, Borrelia miyamotoi, and we're finding that actually surprisingly in the area. For those of you who go up to Sonoma County for recreation also, you'll see there's some higher infection rates. And I should mention that there are hotspots that occur within parks and from year to year. The biology is not totally understood, but in Chinacamp, we have seen infection rates of up to 10%. And what's kind of interesting, too, is that we all worry about the adult ticks, which are pretty obvious. But one thing to really watch out for is the little nymphal ticks, that are only about the size of a poppy seed. They have an infection rate that's about three times higher than the adult ticks, and they will bite you. And the places where they like to hide out are on the kind of decaying log that you might like to sit on when you're hiking for a sandwich or something, or also in the leaf litter. The kids and the dogs really like to go in the leaf litter. So staying on the trail is a, is a good idea when you can. We do a lot of public outreach and education. I think you've probably seen this one up at the ferry here in Larkspur. Billboards, thankfully, are not allowed in Marin County, but we do advertise in Sonoma County. And we have bus station ads, and we're going to be advertising on the back of buses this coming year. This is just a little montage slide that shows the many and varied activities that we undertake. We have a very popular classroom educator. He teaches to the Common Core standards in the schools here. And the teachers love to have him in. The, the students are very taken with his presentations. And we actually give the kids a mosquito emergence cage, so they can track it all the way from an egg to a larvae, to the pupae, and then to the adult mosquito as it comes out. One of the cooler pieces of equipment we have is this large airboat, and we use that out, say, in areas where it's difficult to access by truck. And the Hamilton Wetlands would be one example of that. So some challenges facing the district, like many other local government agencies, we're constrained by rising costs and by revenues that aren't rising as fast as those costs. The district had an unfortunate failure of a proposed assessment that would have been $12 per parcel, as some of you might remember back in 2015. It's likely that we will probably re-engineer the proposal and go forward again, maybe in the next couple of years. And something that is of some concern is that there are some non-native species of the 80s mosquito. They're very well-established in Orange County and Southern California, and they appear to be making their way up to Central Valley. And what's a particular concern is that they do have the potential to transmit diseases like chikungunya, yellow fever, Zika, Japanese encephalitis, and so on. So they're, they're kind of bad actors. Fortunately, those diseases are not in this area, but people are coming back all the time from countries. And we do have some cases, so we work closely with the health officers and health departments to make sure that, we do some surveillance to make sure that those pokes are not going to get bitten, and then a mosquito will transmit it to somebody else. One of the opportunities that's facing us is the use of, potential use of unmanned aerial vehicles. We have a few sister mosquito districts that are using them to fly into sensitive habitats, know that are difficult to access areas, to check for mosquito breeding. So that lowers the impact on the land, and it's, it's quite efficient. And those invasive mosquitoes that I mentioned have, they, so far, they've made their way to Maced, which is 120 miles away. So we, we do have a surveillance program in place, and thankfully, we have not detected these species yet. So thank you for attention. That concludes my presentation. Be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
What a thorough presentation and quite educational. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Bring it back to the council. Any members for Mr. Smith?
No, Larry, no.
Thank you for that presentation. I, I hate bugs, so I appreciate it.
Well, we're on your side.
I had two questions. First of all, you'd mentioned working in the wetlands area.
Yes.
Do you also work in any of the other open space districts?
We do, yes. We work closely with the open space districts and owners of large tracts of land, such as the Audubon Society, the Federal and State Wildlife Refugia. And we actually tried to get involved in the design of those projects at an early phase to avoid the potential for mosquito production. And we, you know, we were involved in the, you've probably seen the restoration projects off of Highway 37.
Right.
As you're heading towards Vallejo, and we were involved and gave seed money and a lot of design advice to those projects.
So if a Larkspur hiker, let's say, is on the King Mountain Trail, and there's a yellow jacket...
I know one.
Would they, yeah, I know one up there, too. Would they, would they call the vector control, or would that be Marin Municipal Water or Open Space District?
They could do either, but we do remove in-ground yellow jacket nests. Sometimes people call us, and it turns out that the yellow jacket nest is structural. It's embedded in the house, and we're prevented from addressing those nests because of the Structural Pest Control Board reserves the right for private pest control operators to do that work. And obviously, they earn income from doing that, so...
Okay. And I guess my last curiosity is with the agricultural methods that you use, with the, with the now growth of cannabis industry, is there any particular sort of approach to that agricultural that's different? Do they attract different types of vectors? Or do we know yet?
We, we're not quite sure about that yet. We do actually have an agricultural program going in Sonoma County, because the city of Santa Rosa irrigates a lot of land with its wastewater, as many of you might know. And when it was first rolled out, that led to some fairly large problems with rampant mosquito production, and they're flying to other areas. So we have that program under control. So that could be a good template to see, you know...
With cannabis?
know, how things go with cannabis, yeah. The invasive species actually are container breeders, speaking of growing things, so we sometimes check the home centers and so forth, because they love to breed in little pots. They're quite different, so if someone's growing, and we have seen that, cannabis plants in pots. People are a little nervous to find us coming along to their sites if they're growers and so forth, and we go to some lengths to let them know that we're not law enforcement and that we're happy to see them. And in fact, we changed the color of our uniforms a couple of years ago, so we're not the same color as the sheriff anymore, so that's sort of rolled out the welcome mat a little more.
Good. Any other questions? Kevin, do you have a question?
Yeah, just a kind of informational one. On the slide where you show the inventory of mosquito sources in Loxbury?
Yes.
The locations are identified in different ways, so is there a key to explain what the symbols are that are being used here?
There is actually. I'd be happy to send it to you. We just left it off, the legend off the slide, because it just got so busy and kind of, but yes, those symbols all have a meaning attached to them, and they identify the type of source, the frequency with which it should be checked, and the color also gives the technician a quick visual on when they will ask that.
Okay, so it's that kind of information?
Exactly.
All right, okay, thank you.
Great. Let me just ask anybody from the, I'll leave the council and go to the public. Anybody from the public like to ask a question? All right, I see none. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Look forward to seeing you again sometime.
Really interesting. I like bugs, by the way. All right. Is Gail going to say anything? Or is there a red? Gail, are you, no?
Oh. I didn't like bugs either, but my assignment for myself is to figure out what bugs I do like. Ladybugs, silkworms. I mean, I know Catherine that you can, you can figure out a few of them.
All right. Thanks, Gail. Again, thanks for representing us. All right. We'll move on. We'll move on to 3.4, Solutions for Homelessness in Marin, presented by Andrew. Hello, Andrew Henning, Director of Homeless Planning and Outreach for the city of San Rafael, along with Ashley Hart McIntyre. Hello, Ashley, longtime no C, homeless policy analyst for the county of Marin. Nice to see you both.
Good evening. Yeah, thanks for having us here. So again, I'm Andrew Henning with the city of San Rafael. I'm the director of homeless planning, and tonight we're going to be talking about some of the systems change work that's been going on around the county, as well as some of the tactical things that different cities can do around the county to really get involved and help with the issue. So the way that we usually like to start these presentations is with a somewhat simple question that we often forget to ask ourselves, which is, what would you do if you became homeless? And if you're struggling to answer that question, ask yourself this: If you were traveling through space and you encountered a black hole, what would you do? The answer to both is the same: You would try to avoid it at all costs. What we're actually finding around the country is that up to 70% of people are able to self-resolve their homelessness in less than 30 days, and it's a one-time, brief experience, which again really indicates that most people know that homelessness is not a good experience, and they do everything they can to avoid it. So the question then for us, working in this field and making policy, is what do we do about the folks that are not able to self-resolve and end up being on the street for much longer periods of time? And what we find is that it's never just one thing that drives people to the street. It's often many different interconnecting issues that are sort of co-conspiring to keep someone from being able to regain housing. And so if we were to plot this different group of demographics across the homeless, people that experience homelessness, from people that are temporarily homeless to people that are chronically homeless, so that's people that are homeless for a year or longer and have some sort of disabling condition, we find that community costs rise exponentially, so that's hospital visits, criminal justice interventions, mental health costs. We find that community complaints rise exponentially, and we also find that vulnerability rises exponentially. So people that are chronically homeless pass away, on average, 20 years earlier than their housed peers from preventable chronic illnesses. So basically, we have this kind of core insight, which is that 80% of our challenges from homelessness are from just 20% of the homeless community. And it was really this insight that's driven a lot of our systems change over the past two years. Unfortunately, historically, both here and Marin, and really across the country and a lot of other areas, most of the focus has been on this part of the curve, and people that are chronically homeless have not been addressed in a very robust way, and as a result, they continue to get worse. Part of the challenge is this: This is our system of care in Marin two years ago, and as you can see, Howard Schwartz, who has his PhD from Brown, he's running the hot team, which we'll hit on a little bit later, he can't even navigate the system, so why do we expect someone that has traumatic brain injury and a mental health issue addicted to methamphetamine be able to navigate this any better? So really, what we have had historically is this cycle where people are inherently difficult to serve. They fail out of programs because of just basic barriers like calling and scheduling an appointment, sobriety requirements. After people fail out of programs, they become distrustful of the system, they don't seek help, and then they get worse, and the cycle repeats itself. And then simultaneously, homelessness has a longitudinal bias, so the longer that someone's homeless, the better they become at being homeless. You can imagine that if you became homeless, eventually you'd find other people that were experiencing homelessness, you'd begin to adapt your lifestyle, you would normalize what's a very abnormal experience, and then you'd enter into survival mode. So sometimes we hear people say, oh, homelessness is a choice. I think in 99 out of 100 cases, if not 100, it's really just a matter of people have lost that ability to process more long-term and medium-term goals, and they're really living in survival mode. And so part of our challenge is breaking that cycle and getting people re-engaged around housing. So fortunately, that's again where we were two years ago, and we've been making significant changes over the past two years to really reinvent and reimagine our system. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ashley, who's going to tell you about the new approach.
Thank you all for inviting us to speak with you tonight. We're excited to be here. So imagine this for a minute. You are in the emergency room. You're there because you broke your arm, and clearly you're in a lot of pain. You certainly need help. That's not a problem you're going to be able to fix on your own, but you've been there for a little while. People keep going in front of you. There's a guy who comes in with a gunshot wound, and somebody who comes in with a heart attack, and you're still sitting with your painful broken arm, but you know what? It's actually okay that the guy with the heart attack went first, because his life is at stake, right? Everyone sort of agrees that the person who is in the highest need should go first in the emergency room. Well, we are doing about the same thing with our housing for people who are experiencing homelessness. We're treating housing more like a medical intervention than like a social service. There's a lot of data that supports the idea that housing actually improves medical outcomes and prevents people from dying on the street who are very vulnerable. So how we do this is we take our entire homeless population countywide, and we conduct assessments with everybody who's experiencing homelessness. Everyone gets the same assessment countywide. There's multiple entry points. Right now, we have assessed 350, 400 of the folks who are experiencing homelessness here in Marin. That's a number that's growing as we speak. The assessment scores people from about 1 to 17, and people who have a score of 8 or 10 or so or above are appropriate for permanent supportive housing. And that is housing that, like the name suggests, is not time limited. People can stay there permanently, and they're provided with the wraparound services they need to stabilize and hopefully, one day, regain independence. So we take everybody who's assessed, and we filter the folks who have a score that is appropriate for permanent supportive housing, and we create a list of those folks that is prioritized by score. The higher your score, the more likely you are to need assistance to maintain housing long-term. So people who score below 8 or 10 on the assessment are referred to other community resources, something like temporary rental assistance with some case management. Some folks are perfectly able to resolve their own problems with a little bit of assistance, maybe a couple hundred dollars toward groceries or something like that, just a light-touch assistance. And the people that we're focusing on really are that higher population at the top of the list. So we have our by-named list that we use here to prioritize our housing placements. So people, much like the emergency room, the person who has the highest need gets the first housing opening. There, and that's done through a collaborative of different agencies, of all of the agencies who are providing homeless housing here in Marin. So as you might imagine, this actually requires our agencies to give up a lot of autonomy. They're not controlling who's entered into their programs anymore. They're not controlling their own waitlists. It's coming from a centralized waitlist, and as soon as a program knows that they're going to have a vacancy, they notify our program, and there's a collaborative of folks who meets to match people with the available opening. So Homeward Bound participates, Buckley participates, the Ritter Center, St. Vincent de Paul, any of our homeless housing providers are part of this group. So we do this with the top person on the list, and then we move down the list until, theoretically, until everybody's housed. What's important to remember is that this is a dynamic list, so it's not, it's not first come, first served in any way. It really fluctuates as new people are assessed. So here you can see we've got a 16, a 14, a 12, an 11. The top three have been housed, but oh, look, we assessed somebody new who's got a 15, so that 11 is going to have to wait just a little bit longer as the 15 gets housed first. So our goal is still to house everybody, but we want to prioritize housing placements first for people who need them the most. All right, and before I hand this back to Andrew to talk a little bit about our housing development strategies, a little bit of broader context. The system that we're talking about here, this is called coordinated entry. It's a federally mandated system. We have to implement this in order to receive our approximately $4 million in federal funds for homeless housing and services. The good news is that actually it's one of those federally mandated things that really works. We are a little bit behind in getting started with our coordinated entry program, so there are communities across the country that have been doing this for a number of years now, and those communities are seeing enormous amounts of success. This actually is very effective. We luckily are a small community with a fairly well-funded program, so we've managed, even though we started this in October of 2017, so just about six months ago, we have pretty much caught up to where our counterparts in other communities are. We've moved really quickly. And since October 1st, we have housed 25 of the hardest-to-serve, most vulnerable folks in Marin through this system. So far, none of our referrals have been rejected by any of our housing providers, so housing providers that previously would have been unable to serve high-needs clients have really changed their service provision and their philosophies, and everybody has fully adopted this system. So I'm going to leave it to Andrew to tell you a little bit about what we're doing to create new housing.
I'm always adding notes to update these presentations. It's a very dynamic process. So as Ashley mentioned, the key to this is really creating more housing opportunities for folks. So I would say through coordinated entry, we have the process, we have the services in place, so it's really about how do we create that housing? So we've created a new effort. It started probably about a year ago, called the Marin Chronic Homeless Action Task Force, or MCHAT for short. It's a pretty gnarly acronym, but the idea here was to really try to bring together as many different stakeholders as possible to think about how we create more housing for this community. So what was interesting to me when I entered this role two years ago was I assumed from the outside that, you know, one of our biggest challenges with housing was just sort of the public's willingness or unwillingness to actually have more units, but what I found in this role is that it's really actually much more of an operational challenge. And if you were to kind of map out the different advocacy groups and policymakers and funders and, you know, different community groups, nonprofits, it's very disjointed. So this is very similar to the slide I showed you earlier for something that an individual might experience. So what's happening really, or what has been happening, is that many opportunities don't get pursued because they don't get connected with the right partners to push them forward. Our process tends to be very reactive, so we're often responding to projects versus being proactive about what we want to see, and then again, there's not a lot of meaningful coordination. And so the idea with MCHAT was to really overcome these sort of core, critical challenges, and our idea was to create something that looks more like a community platform or sort of a centralized coordination function, where all of these folks have sort of a shared consciousness about what's going on around housing, have a shared vision and plan for moving forward. So our long-term vision is to really quarterback, and that's the key verb in this, quarterback the creation of more housing. So it's really bringing together all these different partners across the county to advance housing projects that make sense throughout the county. And in the short term, our mission is to really focus on what's being done through coordinated entry and actually end chronic homelessness in our community. So right now, there are about 360 people that are chronically homeless throughout the county. That's about a third of our overall homeless population. We project with, you know, some amount of inflow that's tapering off every year, that we can actually create enough housing to end chronic homelessness in four years. And really, where we're trying to get as a community is that your inflow of people that are flowing into chronic homelessness is lower than your outflow of people that are entering into housing. And so part of that is both increasing your placements and then also decreasing your inflow on the front end. And so the idea with MCHAT, which we're now hopefully kind of rebranding as Opening Doors Marin, is to really work collectively across every community to create more housing units, again, in a lot of different ways that make sense for different communities. So we've created a business plan for our goals for how we want to achieve that, and I'd be happy to come back maybe later this year and talk more about that initiative so you can kind of get the full scope and details of what's going on with that. But I just wanted to highlight that that's something that's going on, that's also complementing a lot of the systems change across the community. So again, really the key here, and this is getting into more of what local jurisdictions can do, is thinking about how do we actually get people into this system of care? So we have this great process, we're housing people, we're having a lot of success, but how do we get the people that need the help into the process? So one thing that we're really looking to is a great intervention across the county is this Marin Mobile Care program. And so this really began a little bit over a year ago, multiple independent efforts in San Rafael, in Nevada, as well as the Downtown Streets Team organization, which is a workforce program that operates in San Rafael, Nevada, and then they have contracts in Marin City and Mill Valley. But it came down to this basic question of hygiene within the homeless community. So Downtown Streets Team did some outreach about a year ago, where they went out and asked if people weren't showering as frequently as needed, what was their sort of day-to-day challenges with that? And as you can see, there's just a lot of basic, preventable healthcare challenges that people are experiencing. So, you know, again, infections, lack of self-confidence, people can't go talk to an employer, they can't go talk to a landlord if they don't feel confident with their, how they smell or how they look. And this is creating major challenges, not just for them personally, but also, as you might know, within the community itself, where people end up, and when they don't have access to dedicated facilities, they end up bathing in public facilities, so the library or local businesses, or in people's yards, or we also found people bathing in the bay. So this has real consequences, again, both for the individual and the community. So we started looking around the country to find out different ways that communities have tried to address this, and we found that mobile showers were a growing best practice for really getting people the service that they need, especially when they're scattered throughout a community. So actually, most communities in the Bay Area now have a mobile shower program, so San Francisco, the Peninsula, the South Bay, Sonoma has one, and there's really a number of benefits to this. Number one is you don't actually need a costly infrastructure investment. You don't need to build shower stalls, you don't need to go through a huge process like that. You just need shower trailers, which are actually pretty affordable and easily scalable depending on demand. The other thing that's key is that showers can also go to where people actually are. So the only dedicated showers that are in Marin County right now for people experiencing homelessness are in downtown San Rafael at the Ritter Center. But the reality is that 70% of Marin's homeless community is actually outside of San Rafael, so a lot of people end up spending and can spend the entire day just making that commute to and from San Rafael for this basic transactional service, and they're not actually making progress towards, again, housing, employment, or whatever it might be. And then I think the last piece is, and what's really key, is it lends itself to mitigating some of the negative factors that can come from having a more dedicated homeless resource that's there 24/7. It can go in for a couple hours, then it's out, and it's very low impact. And now that we have coordinated entry, it really is providing that platform to coordinated entry to people that historically have not had access in San Rafael. So this is the units. This is Karen with Downtown Streets Team. She's the project manager both for the team and for Marin Mobile Care, and you can kind of get a sense of the scale. This is a beautiful photo of the units. This isn't a promotional picture from the trailer company, it's actually our local unit, and this was your former pickup truck that was generously donated, that is towing one of the units. So this is the mock-up of the unit. They are three-stall units. We have two of them. One unit or one stall is actually ADA compliant, so we have six stalls overall, two of which are ADA compliant. And really, again, the idea here is really using the shower as a gateway to connection to the bigger system. So it's really about going out, assessing people for coordinated entry, connecting them with the Streets Team, which is an employment program, connecting them with medical care. So in Nevada, for example, Marin Community Clinics is trying to pair mobile nurses with the shower, so when people actually go and with the shower, so when people actually go and have these rashes and health issues, they can get the assistance that they need. And then, of course, all this is being logged in the county's HMIS system, which is the system that we use to track interactions and connections within the homeless community. So the timeline so far is that, again, we've been working on this for over a year now, but the program actually kicked off earlier this month officially with the soft launch. Today was actually the official ribbon cutting. It's on the news tonight, you can probably Google it. It was up in Nevada. And so the plan is that as we can develop more sites, that will actually become the primary shower service in the community. And eventually, what's great, again, because it's so scalable, is that we could end up serving 100% more people than are currently being served at the Ritter Center as we offer more sites and more hours. So right now, Nevada has five sites that they're, well, sorry, two sites with five shifts that they currently are operating. Three are at the HUD parcel, which is where Homeward Bound's facilities are, and then two are at the Marin Community Clinic site. And then we also have a pilot site going at the Health and Wellness Campus in San Rafael. And really, again, one of our calls to action is to meet with communities throughout the rest of Marin to see if we can get an additional rotation. So ultimately, we have the five shifts in Nevada, we have, our plan is to have five shifts in San Rafael, and then we'd love to have a five-shift rotation in Southern Marin, Central Marin as well. Obviously, the key to this is really making sure it works. So when we took this to the Nevada City Council, it was really about making sure that this is impactful and it's not just a feel-good, but it's really making a difference. So this slide lists all the things that we're tracking for the city of Nevada, which by extension, we're tracking for all the cities. And again, you can see part of this is the type of people that we're engaging. We want to check in with the utilization of the coordinated entry system, of the Streets Team services, of healthcare services. And then we're also trying to track unique individuals that are using this. So the idea here is not that we create a service that someone's just kind of jumping to all the different sites throughout the county. What we really want is unduplicated individuals from, just in one community. So for example, if we were to have a site out, let's say, near the marsh, over here near Cordero and Larkspur's area, we'd want to make sure that the people that are being served there are really just unique to that area. They're not coming from, let's say, being homeless in Nevada or homeless in Richardson Bay, but it really is serving that local population. That's our goal. The funding is, in terms of capital cost, we got a generous capital grant from Marin Community Foundation for $120,000 to buy the two units. And then MCCMC, so the Marin County Council of Mayor and Council Members, has been, gave some funding, and Ashley's going to touch on this, from the Community Homeless Fund to the first year of operations for this program. In addition to that, there have been some philanthropic donations from churches, especially in Nevada, and then there's a very generous partnership going on with EO Soaps, and so they're providing all the soaps and shampoo and everything for the program. Again, the truck was donated from San Rafael, and then your truck here, and you can get kind of a sense of the scale. This is part of the training that was going on for the units, and then this is kind of hard to see, but you can kind of get a sense of the size of the unit compared to the truck. So it's actually not that big. It's not a big gargantuan unit. It's actually pretty, pretty small. And if you have more questions or more information about this, I'm happy to field some of them as well, but you can also visit the new website, MarinMobileCare.org. So with that, I'm going to turn it back to Ashley to talk about the Community Homeless Fund, and again, how cities can be involved in driving these efforts forward.
Thank you, Andrew. All right, so the Community Homeless Fund is not news. I'm sure you're all familiar with this, but as a quick recap, it was a three-year fund that all of the cities and towns in Marin participated in. It generated $180,000 per year, and the first year, all of that went to rest, and then in the last two years, 2016 and 2017, it went partly to rest, and because there was some extra money, some of that went into supporting the mobile showers. So what we are asking for today and from all of our cities and towns in Marin is a continued three-year commitment, again, with all of our cities and towns, for the same amount of money, so no changes, but instead of going to rest, which as you know is sunsetting this year, the fund would support the mobile showers going forward. And why we're asking for the mobile showers? So first, I want to be really clear that the county's priority is housing. We know that housing is the solution to homelessness. We are working very hard partnering with our various partners to develop housing and the services necessary to support it. However, for the amount of contribution that we're asking for from each of the cities and towns, you're not going to get a whole lot in terms of housing. One new unit of new construction for affordable housing is about $500,000, for example. If you're looking in a single-family home, acquiring just a single-family home for shared housing for people who are homeless, the cost of one bed in that unit is about $250,000. So if we're talking about bang for your buck, this is a pretty good one. One of the things that we are really focused on this year is looking at the outreach available in Marin. We have a number of different outreach teams. We have our care teams that are, some of them are, one of them is San Rafael, one of them is Nevada, and one of them is countywide, and they're meant to be going out and doing outreach to the community. We have, there's a number of different outreach programs happening, but we do know that there are people who are not engaging in any of our current outreach, they're not engaging in our programs, and we believe, based on the experiences of other communities, that the mobile showers could be a really fantastic engagement opportunity to start tapping into some of those folks who don't usually access our other services, to start bringing them in, to start having conversations about what people would like to see in their housing if they have never had a trusting relationship with a provider, to start to be able to build that, to talk about housing options, to sign releases of information so that we can do some care coordination around these folks, and to do an assessment to really get them into that coordinated entry system. So with that, I think we will hand it back to you for questions.
All right, council, any questions? No? Oh, I have a lot, but I don't want to go first. Okay. Larry, do you want to ask a question?
Yeah, so is this a second round of funding from the cities? Is that going to be done through the MCCMC again?
Yes, I believe so.
So they're going to coordinate it through that committee they formed and then come back and let each of the cities know what their contribution is?
Yes, so we actually had this discussion on Monday night in San Rafael, so we actually passed a resolution that said the council would commit three more years of funding and that it was going to MCCMC. And the way that we described sort of the governance of this, and this has been my understanding of how it works anyway, is that, I guess in 2014, MCCMC created this homeless subcommittee whose idea was to create this fund in the first place. And so that group has met periodically over the past subsequent years. And so the idea here is that they've reconvened, I think the last meeting was in January we met, and so every council was exploring whether or not this was something that each city wanted to pursue and contribute to, and then that subcommittee will reconvene, get the feedback, and then provide a recommendation to the broader MCCMC group to then approve or deny this idea. And so I think then the funding is then coming from, funding allocations, I should say, are coming from recommendations from that subcommittee that are then approved by the broader MCCMC group.
So you're looking for $180,000 to fund showers. Is that the takeaway here?
To support the showers and the case management, the outreach that's possible with the showers, and not $180,000 from each city.
No, no, I understand. That was what all the cities kicked in. So right here on that alternative investment thing, you're talking about the outreach worker for $80,000, and that would mean $100,000 towards the showers.
Oh, no, so the alternative investment slide is really just there here, and I'll go back to it, just to give you a sense of scale of what we're asking for versus what your dollars could pay for otherwise. So a single outreach worker roughly costs about $80,000, and a single outreach worker is sort of limited by their own ability to go across the county and sniff people out. The mobile showers have the benefit of providing a service that people actually want and can help engage people, bring people in a little bit more easily, so one person can talk to more folks who are in need of outreach. Does that make sense?
Okay, so, well, really what I'm getting down to is how's the money going to be spent? So is the MCCMC's committee going to work with you and determine that, or you already know, or do they still need to figure it out?
Well, our discussion the other night, at least in San Rafael, was that we were just approving the funding to the fund. The discussion did indicate, one of the uses that we're looking at is the mobile showers, but that's a recommendation that would ultimately come from the MCCMC subcommittee. So what they decide is actually kind of beyond what we know at this point. I think the recommendation that both of us would make just professionally is that this would be the best investment, but that decision has not been made. Right now, I think that that subcommittee was mainly looking for whether or not different jurisdictions would be willing to continue the fund for three more years.
Okay, thank you.
Larry, if I could just chime in, because I'm one of the managers that attends the MCCMC meeting. The Downtown Streets Team has presented a budget and explained why they need $180,000. A large portion of it's actually people, the people that operate the program, not necessarily as much about the infrastructure. It is in part of their budget, but, so they've given that detail to the committee and the committee's vetted it with them.
Also, I think, are you thinking about buying another shower?
Oh, no, no, no. This would just be operational sustainability.
And how much is it to operate per year, would you say?
I think their budget's 180. That's what we worked around.
It's very close.
Close to 180?
It's very close.
So Dan, in that question, are they looking at prorating it, or not prorating it, but allocating it based on population like we did three years ago?
It'd be the exact same allocation.
Okay, so ours was about $13,000?
I think it's 13 and a half. I'd have to go check.
Per year or for the three?
Per year.
Okay, just.
And that, and I think that was from, half of the 180 is just an equally split amount, and then the other half is prorated based on population size.
It'd be the same number, though, for you from a budgetary standpoint, that you've had in the budget the last three years.
Okay. And this can be a continuation, and we're meeting next Thursday. Is it next Thursday that is the next MCCMC meeting?
I think so. I don't think we're going, but I think you all are meeting next week.
Yeah, which will continue the discussion of the spending. Catherine, do you want to ask your questions?
So you said you have about, in your assessment, 360 chronically homeless people, and then since about the last seven months, you were able to place 25. And what would be statistically a number that you would be optimizing? Obviously, 360, getting them in housing would be great, but what does the data show is the average amount that get housed?
Well, our projection so far is basically kind of benchmarking this year at 360, and then over the next four years, we're trying to improve our ability around something called diversion, and the idea with diversion is really how you manage that inflow. And so it's an emerging practice around the country, so there's really, in a way, we're actually kind of like at the cutting edge of it because we're helping to co-design it with communities across the country. But the idea is really that it's trying to explore all the interventions that one could take prior to actually having someone enter into the local community's system of supportive housing. So for example, if, let's say I became homeless, and then it was primarily driven by a relationship, let's say maybe with a family member, and that if that relationship got mended, then I could actually live with that family member again. That's what diversion is. It's being more proactive on the front end about trying to mend and go through all these different connections.
And when you did your point-in-time survey, I think it was in January, what was our number for the countywide of homeless that were counted?
It's 1,100 overall. So again.
That's this year?
In 2017.
2017.
Yeah. So just to round out your question, so when we made our business plan, we basically looked at, you know, ramping up diversion over the next couple of years, graduating people out of our existing permanent supportive housing, and then also creating units across a range of different options. So landlord recruitment, converting, sort of like the project that you all did here, converting existing structures into new affordable housing. It was really looking at the whole mix, and so with that, we project that we'll probably need about 400 units of permanent supportive housing over four years to truly end chronic homelessness in a sustainable way.
And do you see that that housing has to be targeted to specific areas of the county, or do you look at that as housing, 400 units, that would be countywide? Or would it meet the needs if it was in certain targeted areas?
We're absolutely looking countywide. Not all of the housing we're looking at would be, it's like what we call project-based, where a single building would have, be designated people who are homeless. A lot of our housing is voucher-based, so like Section 8, you have a voucher and you can take it anywhere in the county. So, but we're looking definitely countywide because a lot of the people who are homeless here have ties in different communities across Marin.
So back on that Section 8 idea, today's paper showed that we're going to experience a decrease in the federal funding for next year is what's anticipated, primarily for that kind of supportive housing. How are you anticipating that to affect your program?
So we've been grappling with this quite a lot.
It's about 4.8 million, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, it's a significant amount of money. The Housing Authority, so if I, I'm going to backtrack just a little bit to your previous question, which was how many people do we expect to be able to house every year? And Andrew didn't give you a specific number because that's really actually hard to pin down. In the past, we've had about 25 permanent supportive housing units turnover annually, but as you've noticed from our number, we have housed 25 people just in the last six months because of a lot of new and innovative things that are happening. One of those things is that the Housing Authority designated 50 of their Section 8 vouchers to be new permanent supportive housing, supported by services from Health and Human Services through what's called our Whole Person Care Program. That program is unfortunately impacted by the freeze that you read about in today's paper. The good news is that we also simultaneously experienced about a $400,000 bump in funding from HUD, also to the Housing Authority, for their homeless program, which is this, the Shelter Plus Care Program. Just based on, basically, the, what HUD determines is appropriate rent went up. So they took a hit over here and they got a bump over here.
But you're still going to have a deficit, though.
Not, we think, we think not for people experiencing homelessness. Overall, yes, the Section 8 program is going to take a hit, but we think it will about equal out the Section 8 vouchers that were supposed to be designated to this population that are no longer going to be available. We think will be backfilled by this extra funding in the Shelter Plus Care Program.
So in the funding alternatives, in your list, you had a little asterisk at the bottom, which was getting funding from healthcare partners? And can you elaborate more on what, who those would be and what amount you're hoping to get from healthcare partners?
For the showers specifically?
Yeah.
No, I think it was...
Yeah, it's for the showers specifically.
Oh, it's specifically for the showers, okay.
Correct.
With data on health outcomes, planning to seek significant sponsorship from healthcare providers.
Correct, yeah.
So what's that plan? Because if you're going to get significant sponsorship, that's, might affect how much the MCCMC might contribute.
Yes, correct. Yes, I mean, basically, the Streets Team could speak better to what their game plan is around that specifically, but what we've talked about is, once, you know, six months from now, a year from now, that we've gotten a lot of this initial data from the pilot, we can go and actually talk to healthcare providers like Kaiser, Marin General, Sutter about, you know, bigger philanthropic investments in the program, especially as we compare on, I think, paramedicine services and things like that. I will say in terms of the, I guess, the question as it relates to the Community Homeless Fund, originally, when the fund was created three years ago, the group agreed on this $180,000 amount, and the rest program, Marin Organizing Committee at that time, was asking to extend the number of months that the rest program operated, and that cost was projected to be $180,000. But the reason we were able to fund the showers is that actually over time, it ended up being less expensive, so it was actually only $110,000 a year for the second and third year. And so that surplus led to being able to invest in the shower program. So I think it's the same kind of idea here, if the Streets Team can become more sustainable through these healthcare providers, it would create more flexibility in the fund to invest in other potential pilots or other opportunities later on.
And of the population, is it primarily male, or, I mean, what is the demographic of the population that, of the 1,100 that were counted?
It's about two-thirds male, a third female, and it tends to be skewed older. I think the median age is in the 50s, people in their 50s.
40s, I think.
40s.
We do have a rapidly aging population, which we're seeing in all kinds of things. People are becoming more and more difficult to serve the older they get, and no longer they're homeless.
You know, to prepare for tonight, because I didn't get the packet like that in advance, which is great to see, I watched the Marin Coalition Luncheon that you presented and the videotape's online, which is a very similar program that you did here earlier in the week. But a lot of the questions I found kind of interesting from the senior women, concern about women's safety, and there must have been four or five questions that were brought, directed on that, and I wasn't, I wasn't sure how that fits into your dialogue here of the program, the coordinated entry, because there were a lot of women concerned that women aren't accessing this because they don't feel safe. Is that, was that just their misperceptions, or?
I think so. I think there's a lot of heightened concern that's not necessarily borne out by what we're seeing. Certainly, there are a lot of very vulnerable women, there are also a lot of very... Certainly, there are a lot of very vulnerable women, there are also a lot of very vulnerable men. As we are making our coordinated entry system more and more robust, the people who are the most vulnerable regardless of gender should come to the, float to the top of the pool. One of the things that we, so the assessment that we use to measure somebody's vulnerability looks at a lot of different factors. So it looks at medical vulnerability, it looks at mental health, but it also looks at whether somebody has a history of being picked on, on the streets, whether there's a history of sexual assault, things like that, that women may be more prone to, and because of those things, they may be more likely to come to the top of the list.
The, and I have, I'll be done in a second. The last question I had was, one of the other questions that a member of that audience asked, was that some of the constraints where programs then bring in people from other communities? And how do you address that? How do you answer that question? That if you have a successful program, then will, then the program ends up serving members of the community, of other communities who aren't Marin residents, let's say that?
The good news on this is that there's a lot of data from a lot of different communities that demonstrates that having significant services in your community doesn't actually bring people in from other places. In Marin, we have about 70% of the people who are experiencing homelessness here, lived here before they lost their housing. And that number is remarkably consistent across communities, everywhere from Oakland, Sacramento, to Mariposa County. It's about 70 to 80%, 70, 75% of people lost housing in the community where they're experiencing homelessness. Many of the people who came to that community after they lost their housing are there because that's where they have family, they heard about a job prospect, things like that. People don't usually just come for the services. It's actually really quite rare. And the people that we're talking about through our coordinated entry program, the really high-needs folks, and the astonishing percentage of them are Marin locals, born and raised, graduates of Tam High. They are, the more vulnerable people are, the, the people who are, really, a lot of the folks that you see in the downtown areas, who are talking to themselves, or whatever it might be, the more vulnerable they are, the less likely they are to have come from somewhere else.
So, and, and those vulnerable, they're, they're still, they're mentally ill and doing drugs still. Is that correct? Most of them are doing drugs? If they get housed, are they allowed to do drugs?
So, just a, that, that could be a misconception. Certainly, substance use is something that is common among people who are experiencing homelessness, just as it is among people who are housed. There are many folks who are using substances, many folks who have mental health issues. It's definitely not universal, but yes, mental health issues and substance use issues are typically a barrier to accessing housing. The way a lot of homeless programs used to operate, not just here in Marin, but really everywhere, was you had to be sober, you had to be looking for a job, you had to have some kind of income before you would be admitted to the program. And yes, this is one of the ways in which we're really turning our system on its head. So we're not requiring that people achieve sobriety before they enter housing, and we're not requiring that they find employment before they enter housing. There are, study after study after study after study has demonstrated that people are not very successful at being medication compliant with achieving sobriety, or finding a job when you're actively worried about where you're going to sleep that night, or where you're going to find dinner. It's just really not, not possible to ask somebody to, to achieve those pretty intensive things. But once people are housed, they're much less likely to engage in harmful activities like excessive substance use. People's substance use goes down even when they're not required to participate in treatment. People's mental health stabilizes, people are able to take their medications on a regular basis, people's physical health stabilizes. So yes, we don't require that anybody meet those goals before they enter housing, but we provide them with many, many services to achieve whatever goals they might have once they're housed.
Anybody else?
No questions, just a comment.
Okay. What did you comment?
I just want to thank you for your presentation. I thought it was very informative, and, and I guess, two things. One, particularly the discussion of M-Chat, can't remember exactly what all those, what that acronym stands for.
Don't worry, we're going to rebrand.
Yeah, I, I got, I got that as well. But refocusing the way you're organized in providing these services, I think, is really important. And it's going to realize cost savings for the community, and also a heightened level of service to the community that you're serving. So I just wanted to give you kudos for, for engaging in that effort. As far as the, the contribution that you're looking for, for us, for the showers, I don't think we're taking a vote here or anything like that.
No, we don't have a proposal.
Personally, I think that's a great idea.
Great, thank you. All right, anybody else? Any from the public?
Like to, no? Okay. Thank you both. That was really informative.
Of course, thank you.
We needed to hear it.
Thank you for having us.
Great. Thanks for all the effort you're putting into the homeless scenario. Appreciate it.
Thanks so much. Have a good night.
All right, good night.
So I just wanted to make sure the council, we will have a future agenda item to talk more specifically about the request from MCCMC for the three-year renewal, or the renewal of the three-year commitment. And one question, I think it was Councilmember Way asked, about the Downtown Streets team's understanding of the commitment. As I sit on the committee and represent the managers, I've been really clear with the representative Downtown Streets team that they need to have a backup plan on the funding, because not only do they need a plan for year four, but also, as we've talked about at our council, if there's a recession, this goes on the list of things we may not be able to afford to do, and they need to have a backup plan in that scenario, too. She assured me they actually are aware of that and are working on plans to, to not become permanently dependent on this money.
I would appreciate if any of that staff reporting thing links us to data that you all are providing, or have started to collect during this program, so, thanks.
Great. Thank you. All right, we'll move on. We're done with the presentations. We'll go to for approval of the consent calendar. Would anyone like, from the council, like to pull anything from the consent calendar?
This is a big amount we're going to spend here.
I, I see that's not. Anybody from the public? Nope. Bring it back here. May I have a motion?
I'd like to move approval of the consent calendar.
Okay. May I have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Kevin. All right, now we're going to move on to the city manager's oral report.
Yes. Vice Mayor, council members, a few items for you. I'll start with the obvious one I always like to start with. There's water coming down out of the sky, quite a bit of it, and quite a bit more's coming. I actually took a walk right before the meetings tonight, and creek levels are rising. So we encourage folks to just be aware of the effect that the rain is having on their property and their neighboring properties, and the storm drains in their area, and please let us know if they are concerned about anything they're observing. Want to make sure that the council is aware that the Central and Police Authority Council has called a special meeting for next week on the 29th at 6:00 PM at the Police Authorities' Building on Doherty. And the reason is, the primary reason for the meeting is actually that we have completed labor negotiations and anticipate being able to present a memorandum of understanding with our police officers. I'm pleased, as one of the managers that works on that, on behalf of our three communities, I'm pleased with what we've accomplished. It's, I think it'll be an agreement that will sustain the agency for several years. And from a Larkspur perspective, I'm letting you know, because it's just in time, so we will know what our budget costs really are going to be. So we're pleased to have gotten that done in time to program it into the budget. There are two other meetings that folks may be interested in. First, on April 3rd, we have a public workshop for our general plan update process that's at 6:30. It's also at the Police Authorities' Community Room. We're going to focus on topics around sea level rise, and then health and public safety aspects of the general plan. And we encourage folks to come. It's a drop-in situation. We're going to be from 6:30 to 8:30 with some presentations during the time, but if folks miss any of the presentations, there's plenty of material for them to pick up and a chance to engage with the staff. And then on the 10th of April, we will be unveiling our five-year plan for our paving program for the city, with our prioritization of streets and how we're going to tackle the issue. And folks will have a chance to ask, where's their street in the pecking order, and why is it at the place that it is? And that is also at the Central Marin Police Authorities' Community Room from 6:30 to 8:30.
Dan, what was the date on that one?
April 10th.
April the 10th. At 6:30?
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
And I think I said the previous one, the workshop for the general plan was a drop-in. I think I've got my notes jumbled. That's going to be more of some straight presentations. It's the, it's the paving one that's, come on by whenever you can, so. And then lastly, last meeting, the mayor, sorry, Mayor Hillmer had expressed some concerns about the permitting process at the Central Marin Sanitation, Sanitary Authority with respect to the treatment plant and the collection agencies, and whether or not Larkspur, as a member of that JPA, was, should be concerned. I have now met with the general manager, Jason Dow, and am comfortable in reporting out that Larkspur does not need to be concerned. This is very specific to the operation of collection systems, and since we no longer operate a collection system, the exposure to this new permitting cost and these new liabilities is not one that Larkspur needs to be concerned about.
Okay, it's good to hear.
You'll be getting a full report on what's going on at CMSA in about a month, as they wrap up the rewrite of their JPA document, and it comes back to you. And I know one of the questions you've been asked about that will be part and parcel of that discussion is Larkspur's continued participation or not in the JPA. So, we don't have a date yet for that, but I understand their committee expects to wrap up in the coming weeks.
Great.
That's, I turn it back to you.
Great. Thank you, Dan. Any questions for Dan?
Sure. Do we have any applicants for our Measure B ad hoc, it's not an ad hoc committee, it's a citizens oversight committee?
I think we are into the double digits.
Oh, excellent.
Applicants, yes, right? I'm seeing a nodding head from the city clerk, so yes.
And that selection is you, is, I forget how that selection is coming about.
I think it's the council.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, so I think it's coming to you at your next meeting.
Okay. Good.
Like to hear that double-digit number. Kevin, is there a question?
Uh, no.
No? Okay.
I should, actually, I did leave, along the lines of your question, Councilmember Way. After the Measure B committee is appointed, we'll probably reactivate the Ad Hoc Committee on Finance Matters, which is Councilmembers Chu and Haroff, and have them meet with the Measure B Committee and Mark Pressman from both hands, and to sort of get an overview of what we're wrestling with and how we want to present a financing plan, so.
Great. All right. All right, with that, I will come to number six, council members' oral reports and comments. We have a report from the March 20th, last night's meeting of the General Plan Update Steering Committee.
Yeah, I can, I can touch that, and I think that's going to be the only one, since we had to postpone the 20, 2050 Plan Steering Committee meeting from last week. But we're continuing our work led by Neil Toft, our Planning Director, with the, the general plan update. We had our second meeting last night, where we focused on what are described as optional elements that are included in the draft general plan, focusing on community character, community facilities, and services element. These are optional elements in the sense that they're not mandated by state law, but they were included in the last version of the general plan that the city adopted, and I think we're looking at continuing, continuing those elements as well. Also looking at maybe including some new, new elements, with a discussion focused on economic development, climate change, and sustainability. I don't think we're probably going to be focusing, in the context of the general plan, on specific economic development. There may be various parts of the general plan that may touch on that, and we'll be looking at those elements in a variety of ways as is appropriate. One of the things that I thought came out of the discussion that was very positive, from my point of view, was the suggestion that we add a new kind of introductory chapter on sustainability, as a guiding theme for all aspects of the general plan going forward. And I think we'll see some work being done on that in the near future, and some further consideration of it. So once again, a productive meeting, and looking forward very much to the workshop. That'll be open to everybody, so I would encourage both council members, as well as members of the public, to attend that workshop.
Great, thank you. Would you like to add anything else, Kevin, with, beyond the update? Do you have anything else to, to share? Just while you're on the mic?
Yeah, while, I guess while I'm on, on, on the mic, just a quick one on, on MCE. Although we haven't made final decisions yet, they still have to go up to the board, but I'm on the MCE rate-making committee, where we're going to make an assessment about whether or to what extent to change rates that'll be charged to MCE customers going forward. And preliminarily, at least, I'm happy to report that there's not likely to be, at least coming out of our work, a recommendation to change rates from what were set last year, which will generally maintain the rates charged to MCE customers at 3% to 4% below what PG&E would charge, which is, in my mind, a remarkable accomplishment, since greater than 10%, 10% to 15%, maybe even more than that, of our total charges to customers includes what's called the PCE, PCIA, which is essentially a charge that we have to pay to PG&E for departing load. So for customers that have departed to come to MCE and having left PG&E, the idea is that PG&E customers are not going to suffer from that departing load, but we have to pay for it, and it's very substantial. So when you take into account the, the, the large amount that that PCIA charge represents, and you look at the overall lower costs that we're able to accomplish with our contracting, it's, I think, very, very impressive. So hopefully that recommendation will carry through to the full board.
Great, all right. Thank you for both of those updates. Larry?
Yeah, Kevin, can I ask a question about the PCIA? We've been in Marin Clean Energy now for, what, almost 10 years? I don't, maybe not quite that long.
Yeah.
I would think that...
Not quite that long.
Yeah, the part, the departing load has already been paid for. How does it keep extending?
Yeah, you would think that wouldn't do. In fact, I always remember back when I was first introduced to the concept, that's exactly what I was told.
Are they resetting the meter every time we bring in a new city?
It doesn't have to do with impacts to us. They continue to relook at the methodology, and the reason that the, that the amount of the PCIA has gone up in the last two years is primarily the result of the success of the IOUs, and PG&E in particular, to persuade the CPUC that the methodology that was used to calculate the PCIA previously understated the costs that are being incurred and reflected in the PCIA charge. So it's more of a change in methodology, as opposed to anything having to do with time going by. But it's a mystery, because what the methodology is and the data inputs that are provided by PG&E are not disclosed to us. And that's been a source of great frustration, not only to MCE, but to community choice aggregators, as they have been coming into, into place throughout the state of California over the last couple of years. So we are engaging in a long discussion with the CPUC, and potentially with state legislators, to try to do a couple of things with respect to the methodological issues, including presenting more transparency, making sure that we're not getting stuck with contracts that we ought not to be getting stuck with in terms of what PG&E has. So far, we haven't gotten there yet, but we're working on it.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Okay. We have no other council members' reports. We'll move to, we have no public hearing, we've got none of that, we'll go to the business items. 8.1 Select Finish Color for Larkspur Smart Station Shelter. So do we have, hello, Julian? We have a report.
Good evening. Julian Skinner, Public Works Director, City of Larkspur. So tonight, the item is sort of a follow-up to the presentation we received at the last meeting from SMART's Chief Engineer. He gave us an update on the SMART operations to date, and then talked a little bit about the extension of the rail service to Larkspur, which is currently underway. So I stole a slide from their presentation. This is just an overview of the service to date, some highlights of the... This is just an overview of the service to date, some highlights of the SMART operation. This lists the current stations, starting at the Sonoma County Airport. All of the stations in blue are currently in service. And then at the bottom, that is the southern, proposed southern terminus of the line in Larkspur, which is part of the Larkspur extension that's currently under construction. So this is an aerial photo that shows where the station is proposed. It's currently under construction. There's some concrete that's already been placed out there, so the blue arrow points to the station. And for reference, US 101 is at the top of this photo. And then the long street that kind of bisects the photo, that's East Sir Francis Drake, and then Larkspur Landing Circle kind of loops around. Kind of the yellow area in the middle, that's the movie theater. And then the yellow strip, that is where the platform would be tucked in right behind the movie theater, kind of in between the movie theater and the freeway on-ramp. Here's a zoom in. This is also from SMART's presentation last week. The arrow points to the platform location. The other orange box directly below that is the movie theater. So as you can see, it's kind of hidden behind the movie theater. And then in this photo up to the top of the page is the highway on-ramp. This is a photo from about a week ago. This is walking up to where the parking lot would be for the station. Movie theater would be just on the right. It's kind of hard to see here, but this is just for context as far as how visible the station's going to be from the freeway. And the circle up on the top left there, that's a car on the freeway. It's about 20 feet in elevation higher than where the station is going to be. The other blue arrow on the right is pointing to some of the concrete that's already been placed for the platform foundation. So as part of SMART's operation in the stations that they've already built, they have installed some amenities on the platforms, typically a shelter or a series of shelters and then some benches, lights and trash receptacles. Early on in the process, with feedback from some of the communities in which we're going to have stations, they did settle on a standard station style. However, they left the choice of color for that platform shelter up to the local agencies. SMART chose a glossy black as their default color, but did allow agencies along the way to select alternate colors. And so most of the stations, there are currently 10 shelters that have been constructed, six out of those 10 have been constructed as the glossy black. A couple of other agencies have picked different colors. So on the left here is a picture of the shelters at the Sonoma County Airport station. They selected green for their shelters. And then downtown and the Civic Center, the Tucson-Rafel stations, their shelters are a terracotta color. So those two local agencies selected a different shelter color to match surrounding landscape or architecture. One thing to note in these photos is we have a choice of shelter color, but the other amenities, the streetlights and the trashcans are black, so they don't change color with the shelters. So here, even though the shelters are a different color, the other amenities are, were chosen as black. So just for context, for looking at other places that chose surroundings to drive their color, we don't really have that same condition here based on the fact that the station is set back so far from the street. It's not really near any public, other public infrastructure other than there is a retaining wall for Highway 101 that's a concrete color nearby. This is driving on Larkspur Landing Circle, so on the left, the arrow points to where the shelter would be tucked in behind the trees, behind the parking lot, behind the movie theater, which is kind of the, I call it a salmon color, I don't know what that is, burnt orange colored movie theater. That's the block in the middle. On the right is the view if you were driving westbound on Larkspur Landing Circle. So from the other side of the movie theater, again, the shadow there is a movie theater and the arrow is pointing to where the platform and station would be. So here's a little zoom in on some of the other features that are in the area. There is kind of a sandy color retaining wall at the back of the parking lot that's next to the movie theater. There's obviously the movie theater building, which is that salmon color with some green trim. And then most of the other fixtures in the area, the streetlights and the fence here are black. So the finish on the station is a powder coat, which means it's factory-applied. They don't paint the station when it's assembled on-site. It's applied at the factory. So SMART is running into a deadline, even though they're a year away from service, on selecting a color for the shelter. They have provided us with the standard powder coat colors that are available and have given us the opportunity, if we wish, to select a color other than gloss black. So that's the end of the presentation, so I'm available for any questions.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the council?
Just a, just a quick question. Is there, if we go with, other than the glossy black, is there a cost?
No, as long as we pick a color from the standard powder coat finished palette, it's, there's, there's no additional cost.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. All right. So I do, I do. So sadly, it's not, the platform's not closer to the pedestrian bike bridge. So that's too bad. But when you do park below, when you walk up or when you walk, when you leave the train to the platform, you do look down and you see the cinema, correct? So that building really stands out even when you walk up to the platform. That color is, just stares at you. So I think it's a terracotta, I'm not too sure. But I would recommend to choose the color that matches the theater.
So would that be in this pile here or is that, I don't know?
Yeah, so what we could do is, rather than selecting a specific chip, because we've got photocopies and prints of colors, we would, if the direction was to match the main color of the theater, we would work with SMART to make sure that we got the closest color. Again, in matching an existing building like this that is...
It's a terracotta, yeah. Same thing.
Again, so it has, the, this building has siding on it, it's painted, and it has different, probably colors on different sides depending on sun exposure. But we could pick something that was close enough. The other reminder is this is not a, this is not a building we have control over, whereas in San Rafael, the, some of the buildings they picked have either terracotta roofs that aren't going to change over time. There's, there's no guarantee this movie theater will be this color in five years or even a year. Just, I just want to make sure that we all understand it's not a, this is not a building we have, that's the color it is today, but...
But I understood, Ann, to say that the terracotta that San Rafael uses is the color. Isn't that what you were talking about?
Yeah, it's a great, it's pretty much the same color.
I mean, it's just pretty much the same building is, the same color San Rafael uses.
It's called terracotta. Larry?
You know, my thought on it was, you know, I can't make out the subtleties of the fourth column over, but the three bottom ones have three shades of green, and they all look pretty close. Now, if it were one of the greens, what you're trying to do is to blend in, see, all your picture angles show vegetation in the background. But in order to match, despite what you just said about trying to match the movie theater, there's no sightline that has the movie theater in the background.
Correct. You can marginally see it from the freeway. If you look down at the exact right time, you would probably be able to see the shelter and the movie theater together.
Yeah, nobody's looking down the hill from the freeway. So I would think that we'd want to make it blend in with the background vegetation as much as possible rather than create contrast.
Well...
So that would favor the green.
Have you gone and stood at the platform?
Not recently.
Well, it's pretty much that building, but that's a really good point, though. It could change color eventually. You know, I, I'm, I just thought that that would be a nice contrast to blend it to. And I was going to ask if you can have black seats to match the garbage and the streetlights, but that may be asking.
I don't really have a strong preference.
Well, okay, how about if I put forward that we use the same color the San Rafael station uses, which is a sort of a terracotta color, the same color. We don't have to invent a new color.
Julian, make it now.
Wait a minute.
You know what I mean.
Yeah.
Say that again, please.
Yeah, I'm looking now to see if the benches are integral with the shelter or if they're separate standing, so...
Right. I think it's, I hope it's black. Great.
If it were a flat black, it could look good, but the shiny glossy doesn't do it.
No. Okay. Do we have a motion?
I just want to register my dissent. I think we ought to go with the black. It's consistent with the majority of other, the stations that are being, that have been constructed, and it'll also match the lighting poles and the other trash receptacles. It just makes a lot more sense.
So we got four people, four different preferences.
Well, I actually, Kevin, I'm going to say, that was my second choice, to go with the black to match the, the lights and the garbage, so it doesn't make a big, doesn't stand out too much.
I think that's the most practical outcome.
But gee, Larry, if you want green.
Like I said, I don't have a strong preference on this.
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion that we select the standard glossy black that is being used for the other platforms throughout the SMART system.
Okay, let me just throw one thing in there. Kevin, I agree. Does it have to be glossy?
No, they have different finishes. I think there's a semi-gloss finish or a, I'm not quite sure, it's a matte, but there are varying degrees, yeah.
Yeah. So Kevin, I like to go for a matte finish. Glossy looks really cheap. Trust me.
We'd be willing to amend your... Sorry.
Just trust me on that one.
I'll withdraw my motion if you want to make a separate motion. Why don't you do that?
So have you, Julian, have you seen...
I'd still prefer to do the glossy to make it consistent.
Yeah. Have you seen the matted black? Have you, I mean...
I can't say that I've seen the exact matted black that would be this powder coat color. No.
Okay. Kevin, I'm going to go ahead and accept your glossiness, and we'll move on from there. Yay!
Thanks, do I?
Second, all second.
Right. All in favor? Aye. There you go.
That was easy.
Thank you.
See my colors in my wall in my house?
That's why...
You thought that first world problem really happened.
That's, that's why we have a white house.
Okay, yeah. All right, we're going to move on. Okay, 8.2. Process for receiving, reviewing and awarding applications for the grant supporting art programs in the community. So maybe we have a staff report, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor Vice, I'm sorry, Madam Vice Mayor and council members, you asked us to return after your meeting in January to provide you with a vehicle to adopt a policy that would establish some guidelines for the use of transient occupancy tax monies for grants supporting art programs in the community. So we've done so and tried to codify a simple but clear program that you could administer to, to spend the monies that you allocate annually out of the TOT fund. This is really your item to decide if this is the policy you want or if you'd like some changes to take place. So I'm going to turn it back to you.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the council? See none?
I do.
Okay.
So I spent a lot of time looking online at other examples. And other cities have similar programs, and some of them, bigger cities, have more elaborate structures. But almost all of them don't just limit it to arts. They limit it to, they talk about arts and culture. And I was wondering if we could pursue that expansion of the name because arts, culture then would allow people to apply, organizations to apply who may want to do some type of, of event or historical event or maybe bagpipes or something that's a little bit more broadly defined than just art. So that was my first thing. Then I thought also, I don't know why we are limiting it to nonprofits, like a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. Are we requiring it?
No, I didn't, I didn't say 501(c)(3).
Okay. So that was a question. So we're just, we're limiting it to nonprofits so that it isn't available to...
You could change that. It's up to you how you want to structure the program. You could open it up to, to anyone if you wanted to.
Well, I think nonprofits is still the idea that we want to do, but I, I just want to make sure we don't narrow it too much that it, they have to be registered and everything. And I noticed that's not in there. And then a lot, sort of the last thing that I kind of jumped out at me is, do you think we need to add green braid to kind of make sure that it's more understood, that it's also includes our, the green braid community? Because it just says Larkspur, and sometimes that confuses people.
You got a question for me?
Oh, I'm just wondering what...
So my only word of caution is not all of green braid is in the city of Larkspur.
That's what I was going to say, so...
Be careful with that. And Dan, you don't have a price? Is that, do you have more? I'm sorry, Captain, do you have more questions?
No, I just, I think changing the supporting arts and culture programs is, would be my interest.
And Dan, the grant is $10,000. Is that...
Well, you established the amount every year in the budget. It's been $10,000 for several years.
Yeah. And you know, Catherine, I think it's a great idea what you just said, but because it's such a small amount, I don't know if we should add cultural to it.
But why not give people who want to explore an opportunity to do a program that's more culturally based as opposed to a specific art? Because we don't really define art in here either. So, I mean, in the past, we've only, this grant has only gone to one entity. But what if another entity, like I'm just thinking, the pipers and, the bagpipers want to present some sort of concert and they need some, some financial support for that?
To me, that's art.
Well, this is also recent past because they were one of the, the Macintosh Band was one of the applicants in the days when it was doled out in small incremental amounts.
To me, but that would be art.
So, all right, do you think we need to define art or am I just trying to mince words here? It's semantics.
I don't think it needs more of a definition. I mean, I think it's fine as is.
So we have 10, our 10% is our transient occupancy tax, right? I think it's 10. I looked that up, too.
The entire tax that we charge, yes.
It's 10.
Yeah. But that's not what this fund, so the TOT fund is you take 1%.
Right, I understand that.
So 1/10 of what comes in gets put into this fund.
And where do we do, how did that 1/10 get decided on?
I assume the council did that 20, 30 years ago. It's been around a long time, so I'd have to go back and research.
Wow. So that is, we are able to raise that by, if we wanted to later on?
Well, like most of your funds, they're artificial constructs you've created to control the general fund. So when money's in a fund, in, like the TOT fund, it's the council's policy statement that the staff can't spend out of that fund for general fund purposes.
Right, right. Okay.
Anything else or can I have a motion or new recommendation?
Happy to make a motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Yeah. So I'd like to, I'd like to move adoption of Resolution Number 15 slash 18 of the City Council of the City of Larkspur, affirming the use of money from the transient occupancy tax fund to award grants, supporting art programs in the community and establishing a process to receive and review applications.
Thank you, Captain. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. With that, we are adjourned. Nice job.
Got it out of here, too.
Do I have to, I think I have to have a motion for us to adjourn, don't I?
Uh, yes.
I'll move, then we adjourn the meeting.
Okay.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.